We'll go ahead at this time of ten oh two and open up our regular board meeting for November fifth, two thousand fourteen. If everyone could please either silence or turn off their cell phones, join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, additions, donations?
We have one addition, property donation offer, and we will be deleting the Atkins Consulting Engineering Agreement.
Okay. An idea to ask Mr. Bailey to give us an update on the warehouse or land. Okay, public comment. You're on Frank.
Okay. Well, toot my own horn just a little. It hasn't been out in the paper yet, as I understand. The Veterans Dinner is Saturday over at the Elks and encourage your family and friends to come out and support the guys that gave their all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Is it at the Elks?
Yes.
It is at the Elks.
Our first item, we discussed, we had a hearing on it yesterday. This is for action considerations, the Workforce Consortium Ordinance Number One oh seven. I don't know if you gentlemen had any more questions on it or any questions on it. It's pretty straightforward. It's just an ordinance putting us into the Tin County Consortium.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
And I'll move that way of chapter.
Okay, I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept ordinance number one oh seven, the matter of adopting an ordinance for edifying the creation of an intergovernmental entity known as Central Oregon Workforce Consortium, and we had a discussion.
Do you have any, are you up to speed on details of it, specifics?
Uh, no. I was gonna talk to you afterwards and...
Yeah, okay. We had briefly talked about it the other day, but yeah, okay.
Sort of funny looking signature sheet.
Yeah, you know, we needed to, yeah.
Might just do a quick explanation of it for our other audience, Frank?
Frank, do you understand this?
Nope.
Do you want to?
I'll do the real quick version. We currently belong to a twenty-four member consortium here in Oregon of the thirty-six counties. There's twenty-four in the top, what's called TACO, the Oregon Consortium, Oregon Workforce Alliance. It's a workforce provider and trainer, et cetera. Ours is Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council. What we're doing now by opportunity through the governor's office over the last several months is reforming a new consortium, which is a tin county from our part of the world, Klamath and Lake County, up to the Columbia, to do essentially the same thing, but to perhaps provide more oversight and better opportunities. And there's other counties that are realigning at the same time. So this is just merely an ordinance process we have to go through to be a member of the Tin County Consortium.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Have you got some?
We also have to agree.
Do the intergovernmental.
Right. The next matter is the intergovernmental agreement creating the Central Oregon Workforce Consortium. Mr. Bailey, was there any comments that you had on this? I know you reviewed it.
Yes, no, it's all very straightforward. It's probably just the positive things, so.
Okay.
I'll move to enter into an intergovernmental agreement creating the Central Oregon Works, Workforce Consortium, COWC.
It's been moved and segmented to enter, to approve and enter into an intergovernmental agreement creating the Central Oregon Workforce Consortium. And that's merely Frank, that's just merely kind of the working details as we are now going to be affiliated member and how we're going to interact and make board appointments in our whole process, just kind of hand in glove.
Well, we had a breakout meant to say at the start. I need to be out at the airport at eleven o'clock, so I'll be leaving in about ten minutes till...
It'll take fifteen minutes after one.
Yeah. Excellent. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our next item is the Oregon Care Coordination Program Agreement, one hundred forty-three ninety-five, that Mary brought to us. I'll sign this.
This is one of the public health programs called Cocoon. It's a stand for Care Coordination, where we have a child that has special needs or whatever. It basically provides a framework for reverse to if it needs to be mental health or physical health or something of that nature of a child. It's an ongoing program that public health have had in years. It's just, we knew it. As through Oregon Health and Science University.
Was that, are you doing a motion, sir?
Do a motion that we accept the Cocoon Program Contract with OHSU as presented.
Second to your motion.
Motion's been made and segmented to accept the Cocoon Program with OHSU as presented. Any other discussion? Mr. Bailey needs to sign that too. You two, Commissioner, the first one. Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Who needs to sign that? Is that Mary or me?
You.
You're the lawyer, son.
We, and Chair, you're the one with the authority.
Okay. Next item, industrial park lease, courts, Alamos Gold.
We need somebody in the hot seat, don't we?
We do.
You want me to?
Yes.
Yeah.
How are you today, Mr. Berman?
I'm good, thanks. How are you?
Good morning, David.
Is that a self opinion or a fellow's opinion?
He's good.
Only way we're gonna get through fifteen minutes earlier.
No, let's pull this along. He's good.
Why don't you give a quick overview, Dave? As the chairman's been busy signing the thing of the industrial park lease and put a rat on it. I know you did yesterday, but might give them quickly.
Alamos, course gold, flash, you've got so many names. They're one to lease the half building that's next to, well, next to them and then a friend where COIC is, and they want to rent that. Cause they're starting to drill, starting to move forward, and they need more room for whatever they do, the surveying that they need to do.
And core sampling and all.
So they need more room, so they're, for eight hundred dollars a month, I rented them the, that building, so they can, they can do what they need to do, so. And they, they do want to put a door through there, which that's fine in the agreement, you know, in the lease agreement that we can accommodate their needs to work with, so. And they're, and they're, they're doing that themselves. It's gonna be a seven by seven door with plastic stuff where they can go back and forth and do what they need to do.
And the rent is permanent.
Yes, it's permanent. It's, it's a maximum. It's just like, they already paid the maximum for the twelve, twelve forty-four, twelve...
But it's based on the square feet. This is a less amount of square feet, but it's the full, the full amount?
Exactly, the full amount, yes.
Frank, I noticed you trying to hear, cause Dave's talking this way. Alamos Gold, Gold has the courts mineral rights for Gold. They've been drilling, they have one bay of the industrial park occupied, and they're gonna start up new drilling, so they need additional space, so they're renting additional space. That's what this is about.
At the industrial park, yeah, Ham Street.
Dave, the question is on the door and the pass-through plastic, would they move out, they'll bring that back to a standard, or maybe, maybe ought to consider one of those roll-up doors that should be secured and locked, and then in the future, if we rent it out both, it'd still be usable after, maybe, maybe they would consider something like that, just a thought.
Well, I asked him about that, actually, Brad, they didn't want, they wanted where they can get access when they go back and forth, and that's why they recommended me the, the plastic hanging down where they can get back and forth. But as if they move out, that's something we could look at, just put instead of closing it up, put a roll-up door in there for our...
When they leave, we might have it in the contract now that they install their roll-up door since...
Then we're gonna have to rewrite this contract.
I can add them to it later.
Yeah. Let's work on that later.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll move to approve the lease agreement between Lake County for Bay one-two-four-zero B, South M Street, between Alamos Gold and Lake County, eight hundred dollars per month.
Second.
Motion's been made and segmented to approve the lease agreement between Lake County and Alamos Gold at Bay number twelve forty-B on South M Street to, to Alamos Gold for eight hundred dollars a month. Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Who put the signature sheet together?
She's got the...
Correct it.
My name spelled just a little bit wrong with the turn. Could I misspell it?
Davis, the doorway already in?
No. Knee in.
You didn't put the knee in.
Are we gonna do it or they're gonna?
I didn't do it right. I just didn't look at it. I should've.
Section five two allows us to basically say you guys...
She didn't really sleep last night.
I...
Don't pick it to be.
So that's probably a way we can say, instead of doing that, why don't we work this out before you put it in.
I haven't.
So we really wouldn't need to amend the contract to, in my office, I have to...
Tom, number five?
Thank you. You spelled my name that way.
Yep, get the tenants, well, he has to send that to Canada.
Okay, next item, the airport lease, amend, addendum.
Tom got that, Tom got the pen yesterday. We rewrote it to make it work for what we want to do and the verbiage is more clear instead of being confused with the original amendment.
Always in favor of that.
Frank, what this is, out at the airport, we're just finishing up a Connect Oregon project. Part of it is Withrother. The helicopter folks got their facility out there where we did some improvements, and they, they was gonna contribute some amount of money toward our match, and said they donating a fuel truck, which came in very handy for, Dave can expand on it, but it's mostly just finishing off that agreement with, with Withrother on that grant.
I approve. You approve, sorry.
So, and legal counsel reviewed this and you found a place to pay the ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the addendum to fee schedule, exhibit one dash one, as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and segmented to approve the addendum to the fee schedule as presented, and I have to say, I'm a little bit confused now.
Oh.
I don't see anything in here, and it's, it's the fee schedules.
I'm gonna look at the original, the original, I mean, exhibit one, or A, exhibit A. Do you have the original?
I have this.
That whole package is in?
This is the original.
That was the original, so we had to do an addendum to the original because of the verbiage on that was different than what we're, what he actually done. He was gonna do it in dollars, and then instead he gave it back in that truck for the fifteen thousand.
The value of the...
Value of the truck.
So it's made a bit more straightforward when you read the addendum.
Okay.
That's what it was supposed to be.
Yeah, well...
You approve it?
Like I said, it now says up to fifteen thousand dollars worth of equipment or services will be invested as advanced lease payment. All equipment or services must be pre-approved by Lake County as opposed to a fifteen thousand dollar donation, cause we were mixing lease and trucks. And now we're talking, I don't know what we're talking about. We've separated them out. We've taken the ten thousand that we're gonna pay cash for to buy the truck. Truck is a separate thing, but it's still talking about in this addendum to fee schedules of up to fifteen thousand dollars of equipment or services will be invested as advanced lease payments.
But that's, see, when this originally took place, and I wasn't here for it, so, Ken, you might know more than I do as far as that goes, but that's when he, when, when they first built the, it had nothing to do with Connect Four. It was to do when they started building the hangar, cause building of the hangars was started the, the Connect Four. It was, there was the, so when they did the original for the property and what they did, they were gonna offer whatever on the First Amendment, the fifteen thousand dollars worth of donation of labor or work towards preparing the land. And then, and then when the Connect Four started, that, cause that's what encouraged it, cause the two hundred and fifty thousand of the actual hangar that we built, so that's where Withrother and I might correct, and I hope you can correct me if I am wrong, cause I wasn't here when this, things took place, but, so in the First Amendment, it says what they were gonna do before even the Connect Four, so that really wasn't the match.
Yeah, I just think this wasn't, had nothing to do with Connect Four. I thought this was a lease agreement for the, out there for improvements they were gonna make to the land.
Right.
Before they built their hangar. And today you're talking a little bit about Connect Four, and now I'm...
Well, no, it just, I, I just wanna clear, I would just clear it up, this has nothing to do with Connect Four, if there's any, so that's what I'm doing now, if I override. I'm just knowing people who mix it up, because it has nothing to do with Connect Four.
This has the original agreement for the lease agreement for the fifteen cents a square foot at the airport, and he committed to fifteen thousand dollars worth of improvements, and he didn't get all those improvements in place, so he's gonna do it by donating, or by, not by, not by donating, but reducing the cost of the truck by fifteen thousand dollars to be in clients, in, in compliance with his agreement.
Agree, the original, and then activity, yes.
Now, is that clear?
Yeah. Basically, he's selling a, a fuel truck, twenty-five thousand dollars, and through the process, he gonna sell it to us for ten, then, what, donate?
Well, he's gonna fulfill, fulfill his agreement for the land, the lease agreement of the fifteen grand by reducing the cost of the truck by fifteen. It's not a donation, he's, he's paying his agreement.
His agreement, right.
So, we gotta take the donation out of there.
But the whole thing is, how is it written to say that? Well, it's not, so I'll ask one question before we call for the vote. When this is voted upon and we move forward, will he be paying an annual lease?
Yes.
Okay.
Nothing changes as far as his annual lease, he'll still be in the fifteen...
Cause it says on here, up to fifteen thousand dollars worth of equipment or services will be invested as advanced lease payments.
Think that was on the original?
This is the one we got today.
Right, right, what I'm saying is that he had changed that because of the original, on the amendment of the, when you first had to first, you had to change that because that ain't what he did on that, so we had to make an addendum. If we, if we used to go back and he offered the truck, that would be what he would put in there. He's paying his fifteen thousand from the original lease agreement.
So, I will, I will call for the vote, but I will also ask the question, Mr. Bailey, does this need to be signed by all parties?
The addendum?
Yeah.
Not the addendum.
Okay.
Just by you.
Well, yeah, it's a contractual agreement, both parties would have to sign it. I don't wanna disagree with legal counsel, but it, it's a contractual agreement.
Well, it's...
It's an addendum to the original agreement that we, I don't think of...
I was describing as addendum to fee schedule. Boy, this one has been hard to get through, hasn't it?
All for a truck that we actually do want?
That we really do want. Right, well, let's think about it, all this all started for our camera, so I'm sitting here trying to figure it all out, and Tom too, we both...
Well, okay, let me ask this question, maybe this'll clarify it a little bit. It states up to fifteen thousand dollars worth of services will be invested in advanced lease payment. From this day forward, is it, is this lease payment fifteen cents a square foot, or does it, part of that fifteen thousand go to the future? Or is that just getting him in compliance up to today?
That was giving him compliance until today.
So, there's no more...
No more, it's all, it's cut and dried.
Cut and dried, there's no more credit going to...
No, what he did, by doing this, he obviously did what he said he would do in the addendum.
And so, and the verbiage here though is sort of misleading that way. Well, invested as advanced lease payment, and so we're looking at addendum to, that's what the verbiage was in the original thing, that it fulfills, and from today forward, it's fifteen cents a square foot, I'm good with it. Is that where...
That's my question.
Yeah, that's my understanding. Well, I would suggest, and make sure it's called on the thing, state exactly what's transparent, and we vote on that, then we get the paperwork cleaned up.
So, are we still paying ten thousand as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Cause that's what I'm hearing.
Well, that, that, see, that was the confusing part, Denise. We were working with a lease agreement the way I understood it, and we were also buying a truck, and we were trying to mesh that addendum to take care of all of that on future lease payments, the ten thousand. We agreed yesterday to pay the ten thousand outright, the fifteen is being donated, so we're back to the addendum on the actual fee schedule for, for the lease payments. And that's what's still confusing, number three.
I think we could have number four, that the fifteen thousand dollars brings him in compliance with his obligations of the previous fee schedule, and from here forward...
Previous lease payments, yeah.
That is...
Yeah.
No, no motion was made on the ten thousand, just so you know. I don't know if you need one, but no motion was made to pay the ten thousand.
Yeah, well, it's a capital purchase, we'll have to...
So, Mr. Bailey, you're following this, I'm sure.
Well, we'll take a five-minute break, and he can write it up in like thirty-five seconds. Probably could. But I guess, as we've started to walk through this, now I'm not sure about the, the contract for the sale of the used truck, because what it says is, buyer, Lake County Airport, agrees to the purchase price of twenty-five thousand, split it in two transactions, ten thousand paid to purchase the truck, and fifteen thousand donated to Lake County Airport. That makes it sound like we're donating it to ourselves. It's not a donation, it's, we gotta take word donation out of it. Yeah. He is fulfilling his contractual agreement of fifteen thousand dollars by reducing the cost by fifteen thousand. That's not a donation. Right, so that's... He's paying his obligation by reducing... Yeah, so this sentence needs to be redrafted, so that it's...
Well, Mr. Bailey, that, as I understood, this, that's what this addendum was attempting to do, was to get at that, but it's still...
Well, before we get to that, so we gotta fix this, and then when we go to the addendum, then this, this is bad, but it does have to be signed, because it's actually an amendment to the ground lease, cause it's the fee schedule that was part of the ground lease agreement, so it does have to be signed by both parties. Clear what you mean?
Well, can we change, is it possible for the sake of, because we're all in agreement on this, that the, the motion before us to allow us to approve a contingent upon you and Dave getting that cleaned up for our signatures?
And clear message.
Yes, you can, you would do two things. You would move to approve the purchase of the truck, and then you would move to approve the addendum to, we're just gonna, I think I would call it the commercial ground lease. So, so I don't think I got a second in my motion, so...
Yeah, I actually did, we were in discussion.
Okay, so, we call for a vote, we can, well, then we can go on.
Before we call for a vote, I always have read in the notes.
All that there is is just discussion, there's no motion made yesterday. Oh, and today's?
Yes.
Oh, today's it just read that you, that Commissioner Warner's made the motion, you second.
Motion, how does a motion lead?
That I, to approve the addendum to the fee schedule, exhibit one dash one, as presented.
Correct.
Right. So, I think we're just gonna re-style that as a motion to approve the addendum to the ground, the commercial ground lease.
Let's get this current motion off the table.
Yeah, that, this mo, the motion are now on the table, it's for the addendum.
Is the best way to do that, to call for a vote and have no in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion did not carry as...
So, we need, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase, the first thing we need to do, the purchase of the nineteen, is it the name, whatever year the...
Eighty-four.
The truck is for the cash amount of being ten thousand dollars to be paid as cash. The total value, twenty-five thousand dollars, for fifteen thousand dollars of that to be used as the obligation committed by Withrother to the fee schedule.
The previous fee schedule.
Previous, yeah, the seller will use it, fifteen thousand to fulfill its obligation of the fee schedule, which you just moved it down, so I guess... You said we need to do the, the truck versus income. Oh, no, you can do it in either order, but I'm sorry.
Well, you don't, you don't follow your own direction well, sir.
Well, apparently, since I'm calling the shots, yes, I'm directing you to approve the purchase of the truck.
I'm trying to do this right, sir.
So, we're starting over again?
What's that?
So, that's my motion.
Restate your motion.
Motion is to purchase the nineteen eighty-four fuel truck for ten thousand dollars cash, it will be paid to Withrother, and the other fifteen thousand dollars of value will be put towards the fee schedule to bring him in compliance with his current obligation.
What is that current obligation?
Is it fifteen grand?
Is it fifteen grand?
What?
I can't, I don't know.
It's written, it's written in the fee, fee schedule. We, we can get a second, and we could have a discussion.
Second it.
Okay, it's been moved and segmented to approve the motion that was made, discussion.
To clarify, the fifteen thousand dollars written in the original fee schedule, exhibit one, number three states up to fifteen thousand dollars worth of services will be invested as advanced lease payment by accepting the fifteen thousand dollars value of the vehicle that will bring Withrother in compliance with exhibit one fee schedule, that's in place at this time.
Okay. Yeah, hi.
As long as we have a motion that can be tracked six minutes from now.
Yeah, and Mr. Bailey, we are gonna need to definitely capture all that, and I would like to suggest that we're, through meaning and continues to, is advanced lease payments. This is just in arrears. This is catching up, the donation was, with whatever was catching up, but it's not something for the future. As we stated, there'll be current billing from this point on.
Okay. Current lease payments from here forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. It's pretty easy.
Hey, that's a fifteen minute sentence.
Well, we still have to do the addendum.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, with legal counsel's help, working with Mr. Bailey, Mr. Berman, to write the addendum to the fee schedule, that will represent that from this day forward, Withrother is in compliance with his previous obligation of the fifteen thousand dollars by him reducing the cost of the truck we purchased by fifteen thousand dollars. And the addendum, that the exhibit one dash one will reflect that as rewritten with legal counsel's help.
Contention on that.
Contention on that.
Second.
Motion's been made and segmented to approve the motion that was made. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you capture all of it, please?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll get to this one before we lose Commissioner Kessler, the Northlake ATV Committee Member Recommendation.
You're telling me. No, you're...
You're telling me, I know you're a legal counsel, I learned to do that. And I'm in your chair, and I know where I have to air for right now, so.
We're meeting at the airport at eleven o'clock, I'll, I'll be there at just about that time.
Okay.
Could I, could I just take a couple of minutes break real fast, I do need to catch Mark.
Okay, I'll take that.
All right, you can continue now.
Two minutes now, or?
How?
Three seconds.
Okay.
Maybe we could do the meeting minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
She turned off the machine. I just wanted you to be here for this ATV discussion. So, Dave now has revisions to both of those documents. Apparently, that's what he's running off to take care of, so those should be- Any form that you can sign at your leisure. As long as it says what we thought it should say.
Well, the ten thousand dollars is real straightforward.
Yeah.
Ryan and make that as a single thing, and the fifteen thousand for the additional part of the fuel, fuel truck was written previous as a donation.
Yeah, but I've changed that, so now it's, it's very clearly connected to the addendum.
The previous load lease payments.
Things got a little confused, because there's addendum to addendum to addendum, and none of them matched.
Yeah.
We were trying to get it straight.
Well, that was certainly the difference. Especially by the theme.
But this fuel truck is a real big plus to the airport, because we can take a full load that's coming in. We have capacity to take the full load, and that reduces the amount of per gallon price that we pay.
Okay, back in session at ten thirty-three. Next item is the Northlake ATV Committee Member Recommendation. We met, we've had two meetings on this, Frank, on the ATVs countywide, on, on certain county roads. We had our last meeting in Northlake at Christmas Valley. There was concern expressed by a portion of the folks there to allow it at all. There was concern expressed by another portion to, in any way, shape, or form, not consider allowing it all. So what we did is we came out of the meeting agreeing that we would make an official appointment of a committee up there to get together in this, in the ninety days from when we passed, because we did pass the ordinance. But it's contingent upon this group meeting and agreeing on the roads that are currently in the ordinance as open for ATV use to come back to us, not with additional roads, but if they want to change the existing roads and lessen the amount that are open, we will consider that at that time their recommendation. So today, we're in the process of appointing a committee of interested citizens from the Christmas Valley, Northlake area.
I, I think, not to say that it's absolutely, there's potential for them to come back and say the town site to be open, which could be different, so-
That, that's true.
But for a whole section that's closed now, I don't think that would make sense.
That's true, yeah.
The only thing is, the, the ordinance was not approved contingent upon anything, it was approved-
Right.
And it has within its own terms, it can be changed to address the concerns.
Thank you, that is a truer statement.
Do you want me to list the names that were received?
Yes.
Ron Wilson, Becky Tocle, Kathy Allen, Kim Threet and Gary Perkins would like to serve as one entity on that board. Sid Robinson as the local business. And we, in addition, have Lynn Oster and Marlene Jansen.
So Denise, the only thing that's not a hundred percent clear to me is, is different interested parties. Do we have their names broken out?
We do.
Those, so that we can-
Mr. Threet and Mr. Perkins would be our farming persons. Sid would serve as our business representative, and then we had for three, just citizens at large. So, the board was designed for five. But is that your discretion if you wanna have?
So, when you say Mr. Threet and Mr. Perkins, they want to be one person?
Correct, they want to count as one, so you look that as, they do, they do operate their business together, so.
But would they each be on the committee?
Correct, they will both be attending the meeting, so.
And would they both be voting members?
That would be your decision.
If they will.
I, I believe that they would consider themselves both voting members. How long do you want to keep them go back?
I, I, I believe they're representing one entity, one, one farm, but son-in-law and a father-in-law and so forth, and have two votes, doesn't seem to be appropriate compared to somebody else. They wanna bring their son-in-law in, and they would have the argument as, well, they're representing my business and this is my son-in-law, I want two votes also. You know, I, I, I would think with them, we should have one vote. I'm very much in favor for both of them to be able to participate, but one vote.
I would hope that they hold meetings, just as an aside, that lots of people participate with the committee that we appointed.
Well, that, that was our, our recommendation to have community meetings, so our community came forward with the recommendation.
And my understanding that Mr. Threet would be the primary of those two, between Mr. Perkins and Mr. Threet.
So maybe we should choose one of them and the other one?
Couldn't be an alternate to that person.
Okay.
Now, I have a question. You said that we was looking at a five-person committee, and I have eight people here, of which we just resolved two to be one, so that leaves six. We got Ron Wilson, Becky Tocle, Kathy Allen, Marlene Jansen, and then Oster.
Which is seven.
And then Sid Robinson.
Perkins is seven.
We have seven, there are seven, not including Mr. Threet, Mr. Perkins.
What's the other three?
Unless I've, I do look at here, I don't.
I don't have mine yet, I think.
Yeah, well, they're all right here.
Well, you've got, you've got the five on here, and then you've got the three other ones.
Minus one equals seven.
Oh, you're talking about this representation.
This is what I have.
Yeah.
Yeah. Seven.
Yep.
We could got an agreement, there's seven.
I was just coming in about-
I think it's the mood piece or something. Right, well, we talked up there about having a committee of five people, but there's nothing cast in concrete.
Yeah, you can create a committee if you want to, it's just-
Are we recommending that we create a committee of seven?
I am, I-
Okay, is that a motion?
I'll move to approve that, that the people that are interested for them all to be appointed with Mr. Threet and Gary Perkins to have one vote representing-
Farming.
Their, their farming, but.
Second.
It's been moved and segmented to appoint a seven-person committee of interested parties from Christmas Valley as presented to us. We have eight names, and two of those are from the farming community, Mr. Ken Threet, Mr. Gary Perkins. And we will have Mr. Ken Threet as the voting primary member. Any other discussion?
Do we need to give a charge to him?
We, we need to have a date get back to us by-
January sixth, we are scheduled for our agenda for them to bring forward their recommendation. So they would need to have their recommendation to us that Thursday before.
And it's up to the committee to conduct their own business, to solicit public meetings, et cetera, so.
We highly recommend for them to have community meetings and bring the community together.
They will be considered other bodies, so they'll have to announce that they're having meetings, just like me do.
So Denise, you'll take care of that communication with that whole group?
I shall.
And do you have somebody as the chairperson?
You don't need to have a chairperson, but it would function more smoothly if someone said, okay, now we're gonna move on.
So we can recommend, not require, but recommend that at their first meeting, that they get a chair of the committee.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next item, printer purchase. Denise gave us some update on needs there yesterday.
At this time, I'll need to, apart, we have WA Pacific kicking off a new connect Oregon grant on a resourcing the runway at the airport, and lay us on to be at that meeting.
Okay. See you later.
Printer purchase.
Yep.
I'm good. Any, Denise to go a little bit more here?
Sure, so the printer purchase request is for the replacement of the copy machine currently in the Commissioner's office. We do need a faster, more efficient copier in our office, but we also need to fill a very strong need at the annex, because currently their machine is copier only, it is not a printer, it's not networked. So, we need to make sure that we're meeting all of our HIPAA requirements with the offices in that area. So, I, as a heads up, did not budget for a new printer for this year, so this would likely require a resolution later in the year under materials and services. It is under five thousand dollars, so it doesn't count as a capital purchase.
So the question I think was asked yesterday, Denise, by Commissioner Winters, the, the amount of, I don't know if we can do that, the amount of money for improvements at the annex.
The treasurer said that would be a stretch.
Okay. Well, and, and we're not, and we're actually not purchasing a machine up there, we're moving a machine from here to there, so. We'll, sure, work out those details.
That device that is currently up there is a nineteen ninety's model, so.
Wow.
It's old. It's bigger than mine, and it's old.
Well, I'm a sixty's model.
Hundred and fifty's model.
No comment, recorder's on.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the purchase of the printer. Total price, four thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Acknowledge that we may do a resolution at the end of the year unless there's appropriate funds that can contribute to the purchase of this.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the purchase of the new printer in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting minutes. I don't have my listing.
We have two sets.
We have two sets, we have October fourteenth and October fifteenth. Move to approve as presented, both October fourteenth and October fifteenth.
I was absent on the fourteenth.
Is it the meeting, but absent?
Is that what it shows? Is it showing where? You never know.
So you weren't at, which one?
This one.
Okay, so I'll move to approve the minutes of October fifteenth as presented.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the minutes of October fifteenth as presented. I think that's the fourteenth on it. Later, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Bailey, why don't you start with the Warehouser land?
We approved to accept the proposed donation by Warehouser of their mineral and geothermal rights in Lake County. I contacted Warehouser representative, who was going to proceed with this. She thought it was wonderful that we decided to accept the donation, and she is preparing documents to accomplish that transaction, transfer.
So, within our discussion, I, I'm vague on what it was. We needed to do some kind of other-
Bless you.
Background check, information.
Title research.
Movement?
No. The question was about the form that they wanted to make the, to put the transaction in. It was a question of what form they felt would be the most appropriate transaction form to make the transfer. And so, I discussed that with her. So she's gonna repair the documents, then I'll review them to see whether or not that's something that we would agree with. But they're doing the initial draft and presenting it to us, and then we'll talk about that.
The next was the request for us to accept a property donation from, I don't remember the gentleman's name.
Mr. Hoffman, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
That was correct, Michael R. Hoffman.
This had been brought previous years to different people within the county. Last week, it was finally made it to Commissioner's office. I'd done research and made the recommendation that we should purchase these, or not purchase it, except the donation. This will help close the estate this person's working on, he has no monetary value. The location of one of the lots is very advantageous to us, because it's within some of our road department areas. So it's a very fortunate thing for him to be willing to do this. Denise got it out to legal counsel, legal counsel, the comment was concerned about cleanup.
That's right, that was my only concern.
And I viewed them Google Earth, I haven't been out exactly on them, I don't believe that's an issue.
And to follow up on that, I talked to planning director Darwin Johnson, who said that we're clean.
Yeah, so.
So is this part of the, are these parcels? You spoke to one, and part of the, what was proposed adjacent to the, to the ore camp?
No.
Not adjacent, but-
These are OBL lots, they're twenty-five by one hundred and thirty-five, could give up fifteen foot, they're not buildable. But one of them is located within the backside of the road department, where Filbert and them joined, some road department side. The other one is south of town in, I guess, no man's land, it's just out there. That one there, I would presume that the county would probably put through the tax sale in the future, because it'd be better to have it on the tax log.
So how, if we accept the donation, or move to approve accepting the donation, how do we actually officially get it to us?
Well, I, I assume that he has a donation document that he presents to us.
Okay.
So, I think it might be best to do it as, well, okay, you can just do it as a single motion, the donation of property, the proposed donation of property from-
Michael Hoffman.
Michael Hoffman.
So you could, you could move to accept that donation, that offer.
Well, I'll move to accept the donation of two OBL lots described within the letter from Michael Hoffman into the county ownership.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept the offered donation from Michael Hoffman to OBL lots as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So, will we have Darwin follow up to make that happen?
Yeah, just ask, have Darwin ask whether or not they're gonna present us with the donation form, if they'd like us to draft this.
Okay.
He hasn't been in the loop as much, it sort of went some different ways, so Denise, make sure, make sure that we, we follow up on that. I think we could please follow up on it.
You bet.
I would presume that Hoffman would want to draft it, because he's the one cleaning up his estate, so he wanna make-
He, he paying all the taxes up current, he does a lot more compensation, he's willing to pay the fees that it takes. Very nice donation, so.
Okay, legal updates.
None that you aren't already informed of.
Perfect.
And I remember all of them. And department updates.
I just wanna have clarification from yesterday's discussion with Actech on our IT plans, what direction you want me to take on that. We have to discuss maybe putting together a working group with knowing parties, I don't know if a better term, I guess. I do wanna stress the importance of what we're looking at. I was given some information on a Oregon, one of our lovely Oregon towns. Their city was actually sued, because they did not have the proper steps in place for training and whatnot. the proper steps in place for training and whatnot, they were sued for sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, so it is important, so I just want to stress that to you guys.
So Denise, with that, I would, I would suggest, you know, if you've been working with Mr. Brown, that you tell us who you think would be appropriate to have on a small committee to make this happen.
Okay.
And that we, we can make contact with anybody that there's.
I would see that working group involving legal counsel, our HR, and possibly if Mr. Brown was willing, either himself or one of his staff, just kind of guide through that, Mr. Brown with ACTEC.
I, I think that would be imperative to have, you know, because they have access to all the known policies and procedural things out there, we just need to wait on our part, so.
But I really, I really do need.
Well, as these things are discussed, and we all know, sometimes, you know, they can be, they can be a little more hype than, than normal, but we all appreciate and understand the need in this day and age to have well-known procedural steps for use, for security, for processes and procedures, and we have all of our employees, not just some, but all of them, and we have a policy in place for them to, to know for their own protection, the county's protection, and that they sign, and the people you mentioned are key to that from a legal standpoint, from a personnel standpoint, from a technical standpoint, so.
I would invite as well, if one of the commissioners wanted to sit on that group, just to stay engaged.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Lars had mentioned yesterday, he had a great deal of interest in it, so.
He looks pretty darn excited.
I'm honestly quite excited about this, I don't know the, the commissioners going to, the commissioners are going to approve these policies when they come forward, I think there's people with expertise working on these policies, I don't think the commissioner has to, it's my thoughts that a commissioner could, both legal counsel to cover us on the legal side, on policies and procedures, on something no pun intended, this is technical, and our risk manager there, you there as our contract person, and then ACTEC, I'm, I'm good with that, what I would think would be a real good thought would be, once you get them pretty much there and a pretty definite draft, and maybe we have a staff meeting and talk with our staff about this, is where the board of commissioners would like, and then, then approve them, so if the staff have some concerns, they could maybe bring it forward.
Do you want with all staff or just department heads and elected officials?
Probably department heads and elected officials, I'm, yeah, yeah, probably, but that's in the future, I just, I mean, I thought to roll.
No, I think that's an excellent.
I think it's exactly the way to go, I'll just point out that it's tradition that you appoint the person who's not here to have those.
It has been, it's been tradition.
Okay.
All right, that's.
So, good enough clarification?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Executive session.
I think we're in executive session.
Any other, there was something else I was gonna.
I was thinking that, that legal counsel just plumbed through me for a move, that no legal updates, no, no executive session, I.
Sure, I can come up with something if you want.
We, we must, we must be, things are going good.
So our next meeting is going to be?
November twenty-fifth, and we don't need to begin until the end of the month.
And that's a work session meeting?
That is correct.
So we're gonna see somebody, planned to see somebody till early December?
Correct.
Which will be in Paisley?
Yeah, that's right, it'll be at Paisley.
A bit of an update to Mr. Bailey.
Should we close the meeting or?
No, it's for open session, I have a tentative date set for December ninth to have a joint meeting, it'd be a special meeting with the town of Lakeview for a term agreement with Red Rocket, it's a tentative date, nothing's for sure, so there may be things come across for you to agree to.
Okay.
For down then.
Okay.
But that's tentative date, and it's a special meeting, but we might have you call in on that date or something like that.
Okay.
I didn't get the date right, didn't I? I was only twenty-four hours off on my last doctor's. I wasn't late, I was just twenty-four hours off.
And a reminder to you, gentlemen, you have Oregon State Extension Services at two fifteen today.
Are you gonna remind us again at three ten?
Mr. Commissioner and Mr. Shown are taking care of that.
Excuse me? Yeah, I know we're not doing liaison updates, but so that, you know, Commissioner sent you the liaison to community.
To what?
Sent you the liaison to community justice, community.
Corrections.
Corrections, Jake and Lily are gonna be in Paisley tonight at their city hall, they normally have their, their city meeting, town council meeting on the first Tuesday, but since last night was the election, it's tonight, and Jake did have, he told me that they were having, I told him I would be there, so he's just gonna present some of the program offerings.
Good, sounds like you just took over community justice liaison, because I didn't know nothing about it, you're welcome.
We'll adjourn at two minutes to eleven.